All right, so that would be it. It looks like Mike's the only one on public comment. Pete, meeting is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep, I just wanted to-
Pledge first?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, pledge and then, and then Mike also, you're gonna have to do your address when we come back. Chris, if you could say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of-
Which it stands-
Which it stands.
One nation-
Under God.
Indivisible-
With liberty- And justice for all.
We can have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and their first responders. Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Mike Nahom, 18 Hickory Hearth Lane in Milford, Connecticut. As you guys know, I had my, the road race that New Milford products sponsored this weekend and it was in tremendous success. I want to thank- I want to thank Litchfield Commons, the town of Milford, the health department, Milford ambulance, everyone could have taken the easy way out and just said, no, it's, it's not time to do something like that. But they, they took a chance on me and we did everything possibly could to be COVID safe. But we had 130 very happy runners finally getting a little bit of semblance of normalcy. And it was just, they, they were so happy and relieved that someone was finally doing an in-person race instead of all the virtual races. So, um, I just want to thank this, the town, um, it is, as Pete always says, it's the best town in America. And it is, it is truly that way. And to be able to talk to these people and get them to work with me so that we could put this event on was just such a, such a great thing to do. So I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
No problem.
Do we have anyone else, Mike, from, for public participation?
I, I do-
Katie has her hand raised.
Right, uh, Mike Sinello, I just want to let you know Doug said he's waiting, his message says he's waiting for the host to let him in.
Uh, just let him in, just let him in. His, his name shows up two or three times in the waiting room. So I, he must be having technical difficulties on his end.
Okay, uh, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to our whole community and all of the people who came down to the green on Saturday and donated canned goods and money and frozen turkeys for Operation Thanksgiving. And this, I'm saying this on behalf of, uh, the United Way Western Connecticut and the Greater New Milford Women's Club. We do this every year and it was amazing how many people came and, uh, and really, really stellar amount of stuff that we collected. And then again, thank you to Councilman Cosgrove and his son Chris for coming to help load and then unload the jam-packed UPS truck. That was really very nice of you. It was a beautiful day to be doing anything else. So thank you and thanks to everybody in the Milford who came by.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Katie, can we go with these consent agenda?
We can. So I'd like to move to accept the consent agenda, items three, A, B, C, and D. We have the minutes, the tax collector's refund number, fifty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. And also two donations, the social services, the United Way Western Connecticut made a donation of five thousand dollars to social services for the Hope Fund, rent and mortgage help for people. And item D, we, United Way Western Connecticut also had a fifteen thousand dollar grant to the youth agency childcare program. So we can continue to help families that need childcare while we're in the, uh-
Good.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes. I have to recuse from the minutes part, so I'm gonna, uh, hope that the rest of you will, uh, vote for this in its entirety.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on the donations, you know, we, we always say it, but, uh, this community and the United Way, and I know Katie, you're, um, a big part of the United Way here. You know, these donations are just incredible to help, uh, help the needy people in our community. So, uh, thanks to everybody who's, who's a part of that.
I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
I-
I-
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Same.
Thank you.
Item number four, we have an update, um, from Dr. Levin and, um, just a quick to Mike Sinello. Uh, Doug is sending me a screenshot. He just sees what, uh, all of us see. Wait for the meeting host to let you in soon.
You know what? Tell him to check and make sure he's on the right, um-
Blink.
Meeting, because I, when I first came on, I, for some reason pulled up the October, the last October meeting. And that's what I was telling you. I was like, what? So maybe somebody should just ask him if he's on the right, right, um-
Right. I'm doing it now. Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt-
Dr. Levin, could you give us a, an update, sir?
It's my real pleasure. Um, just a couple of things today. Most of it good news and, uh, better news over time. The, the news today, which many of you may have seen and hope you, if you haven't, I hope you do see, is that Pfizer has delivered what are called interim results on their vaccine. And I've looked at the data, the data is extremely promising. It's earlier than I expected, actually. They're showing a ninety percent efficacy after two injections. They started that trial in July. They, they have, they're gonna have close to fifty thousand people in it. And the process going forward from here is that they have to wait a couple of months for the last patient to have had over two doses for safety. And then they'll apply for an emergency use application. That means ahead of what I'd actually anticipated, if it keeps on the way, we'll have a viable vaccine for COVID by the end of this year. Pfizer has said, stated publicly, they have already started manufacturing. That means they have fifty million doses by the end of the year. They expect to have over a billion doses by the middle of next year. They're doing all the manufacturing themselves. And so everything on a trajectory that it means that if we're able to handle the distribution, and I'll get back to you on that in a second, then it looks like, you know, we have a real way of tackling, uh, this, this pandemic frontally. Bless you.
Bless you.
With that in mind, a couple of things just to bear in mind as you think about this, there's better news is that they've demonstrated that it has clear efficacy on two kinds of, of effectiveness, not just on the antibodies, but on the cellular level. That means that's a good chance that this will have a long-lasting effect. The more interesting from a technical perspective for all of us, you know, if we're gonna fight this pandemic, we can ask the question, what happens if it comes back next year like a flu? Well, the real good news about that is that the way that they've developed this vaccine is a brand new way. It's called mRNA. This mRNA vaccine can turn around on a dime, sixty-two days, and produce a new version of itself if there's a new kind of, with a new kind of COVID that comes in, a new strain. So it means that unlike now, we've all been here, and we've been in this particular shop now since January, February, March. And we're now November. It won't be anything like that in the future. So from a technical perspective, they've got a really interesting, uh, material and a way of producing this vaccine, which is quite modern, actually. First time we're seeing a vaccine like this. From a safety perspective, I think being exactly the right thing, uh, I'll be very clear. I will be super comfortable myself personally taking that vaccine if it's approved in November. And in, or between November, December, I'd be super comfortable and I think we should feel all comfortable in that. The tech, I've read all the data, um, it's surprisingly good. Most vaccines are between sixty and eighty percent effective. This guy is ninety percent effective.
Wow.
And that, that's real good news. There's better news is that there are actually two other companies developing behind them. So it's not just Pfizer now. You have at least two others that are coming along. So in terms of planning for the town and thinking about what the future holds, it's not, but there is definitely light ahead of this, in this tunnel, and it's closer than we imagine. With regard to distribution, which is the thing we've talked about in the past, this is one of those vaccines that needs to be kept super cold.
I just sent, um-
And because it's super cold-
I just sent Mike Sinello a note to tell him that.
Yep, Katie, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
It's okay.
It needs to be super cold. Now Pfizer hasn't waited to have somebody else build it out. Good for them. They've actually started to build it out themselves. They've created relationships with a multiplicity of different organizations. And I can tell you directly from their leadership that they expect that they'll be able to get it right across America by the middle of this year. They are very confident of that, which means that in New Milford, we are going to see distribution points. We are going to see, uh, probably in some of the major, probably not, it probably, I'm not sure yet, to be honest, whether it's gonna be in CVS or in Walmart, but it will be in one of the major, which is if not all of them. Pfizer is planning for that, but they do need to have cold storage where they can put them there. And they, once you take them out of that cold storage, you've got no more than five days. You've got to get, you have to use it during that period of time. So, uh, on balance, I think we should all feel pretty pleased. Uh, I circulated to, uh, the mayor, a document which, uh, which basically describes an analytic, analytic view of this. It's fairly technical, but for those who are interested in seeing it, uh, the mayor does have this. And I should, should it be of any value to you, of course, I can get you anything else that you would like. As of today, I think the, uh, we turned a corner.
Yeah, very exciting.
Super is even I'm excited that-
Yeah.
Normally excited.
So exciting.
Sure is.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that if anybody would like to-
Yeah, Dr. Levin, so thank you again for coming on. My question is, is more on the, on the distribution side of it. So when, and you, you've talked about this cold chain storage before. I think what I read on this particular vaccine, it needs to be kept at like ninety, minus ninety F, I think.
Yep.
Um, and it sounds like what you're saying is maybe it can be refrigerated for five days in the local CBS, that type of thing.
So, well, depending, you're quite right. That depends critically on what they've put in place. So Pfizer's, you have to have this ultra-low temperature freezer, which basically means it's gonna be fine for about six months. Then you ship it on dry ice, like fifteen days. And then you've got to have it in the regular freezer, which is the two to eight degrees, but that's only five days. After that, it's done. So that the chain for us to be thinking about is how we have a center which is at, at minus seventy to ninety. Put it under dry ice, get it to us or locally in one of the large distributors, fifteen days. And then no more than five days at two to eight degrees in the refrigerator.
And, and I know, I think UPS and FedEx have announced they're building what they actually call freezer farms.
Yep.
Uh, one in Lexington, Kentucky, I think, and another one, uh, which will house a lot. So will we need something like that in, in Connecticut or some? The, the low, very low temperature?
Almost certainly, almost certainly. Yes.
Yeah, it, it's, um, I think, you know, Pete, maybe we need to, uh, I don't know if you need to start talking on the regional basis. Cause these freezers, from what I've read, are about ten to fifteen thousand dollars each. It's not on, not only is it ultra-low temperature, but I think it's like a plus or minus one degree. They have to stay very accurate. So I don't know.
I know CBS, Walmart, they are already in the process of, of getting these type of, uh, freezers.
Awesome.
Um, as far as some of the other ones, I don't really know yet. I know public health is gonna be talking a little bit more about that in the next few weeks.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Dr. Levin. That's, uh, your updates are greatly appreciated.
My pleasure. We're, we're all living this.
Hey, Dr. Levin, I have a quick question. Come, let's say after the so-called flu season, when this, when things might calm down, if, if come May, the, it's all gone, is that, is the country still gonna want people to take, um, the vaccine or is it one of those things that if there's not enough, if there's not enough spread, that they won't have people take it anymore?
Mike, I, I, I hope they have us all take it because this guy has proven to be super infective. And even if it goes for a while, it's gonna come straight back again. It's like, if, if we're not ready for it and we haven't taken advantage of any dip, any kind of dip, I think we'd be well advised to ask ourselves, why are we doing that? Because you need, you need to knock this on the head. And what might come back might be a different strain. Now that's what I mentioned.
Right.
That, that different strain is gonna be tractable because we've now got the experience and the new kind of technology to handle it. But the bottom line is if it dips and it sure doesn't look like it's dipping now.
Yeah.
We, we need to be, we need to take advantage of that and just say, I get it dips, folks, go and get your vaccine.
And what about, um, the other manufacturers? Do they also need refrigeration for those?
No, Mike, not all, actually. That's a very good point. There are actually six different kinds of vaccines being produced. Of the six, two need to be this, this super cold, but the others don't. And, but they're a little bit ways behind at this, they're a little ways behind at this stage, probably.
Like as a, as a, I mean, just, I'm just thinking of all the infrastructure to put in place for the ones that are almost ready versus these ones that aren't ready. It, it, it might be long-term to have some, have them around just that aren't, um, you know, so intense as far as the infrastructure we have to create.
It's a good point. I think the, 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 you don't need it for those old kinds is that we just don't need it. And they are way behind. And the lesson we've learned from this particular pandemic is that we're gonna have another one in the future. And when that one comes, I don't want to have to wait to have the infrastructure rebuilt because of this new type of technology. I am willing to bet that we'll figure out a way in the future of taking the same kind of vaccine and figuring out how we can get it out of that cold storage, but we're a ways away from solving that.
Right. And you also mentioned that it changes on the cellular level. Is that, you know, cause I, you hear these stats about half the country is afraid to take it and they'd rather just chant, take their chance with, with the virus. When you hear changing at the cellular level, you get a little nervous that it's changing something in you. And that, and that's when you get a lot of people scared.
Hmm, no, I get that. I think, you know, it's, it's a legitimate concern. And anytime you take any medicine, you know, I, I was taught in med school, the minute you give a pill to somebody, you change their life. So we all know that we're all pretty attuned to taking a pill. About seven hundred thousand people every year get, get put into hospital. Those pills do something to them. Uh, we've got used to that, unfortunately. I, I think that the rigor with which people are gonna look at the vaccines gives me good hope to believe that, uh, we will be able to monitor their safely, care, care, carefully. But I think, Mike, at the end of the day, the most important thing is going to be rebuilding public trust in vaccines. And the idea that we would allow ourselves to be infected, let's say, for example, by measles or mumps, doesn't even occur to us. We should be looking at this the same way. Uh, I don't, mumps, I don't want my kids or my grandchildren to have mumps. I, I, unfortunately, I did have it and boy, I didn't, I don't, not very happy about it. The reality is there's good vaccines to stop that. So this is, this will be the same when somehow we have to be able to teach those who don't have that level of confidence that we have to deal with it. With regard to changing the cells, uh, well, actually that's what current vaccines do. And actually, it's a lot of what a lot of medicines do. Uh, a lot of medicines that we take today actually do tell the cells what to do and they change them. And that's, we, we've come, got used to that. Uh, we just have right now a set of words that we're using about the vaccines that I think are, need to be put in context of what we already have, and they are, they're very similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Pete, actually just a question more for you. Are, are you, do you have a plan or taking steps to when this becomes available? We're prioritizing first responders and other parts of the community? Cause I'm sure we're not gonna be able to get all we want in the beginning. Can't hear you, Pete.
Pete, you're muted.
So from what I'm understanding, it's gonna be distributed by, uh, the military first. And from what they're saying as of right now, first responders, medical staff, those on the front lines will get the vaccine first, but that's gonna be a decision way above us. As far as that, would I hope that that would be the case? Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin? Doctor Levin, again, whoops, I'm sorry, Mary Jane.
Yeah, just, it's just a thought and who knows, I guess probably nobody really knows this answer, but it kind of looks like, like into like March, April, maybe until, you know, people, this vaccine really kind of starts rolling out. We're still gonna be wearing masks and social distancing. Sounds like we're, could even be way into the late spring or maybe even into the summer. What do you think, Dr. Levin? What's your thoughts on?
Uh, and do please call me Jeremy. I like my son, when I get into trouble, that's when my mom calls me Dr. Levin, then I'm in big trouble. Realistically, uh, I think you may be right, but it's also something's really gone, something's gone magic here. Number one, you know, the linkage of warp speed and the US military looks like it's working real well. You've got some super professionals there, just like the mayor's just said, they are lining up to do the distribution. On the manufacturing side, this is run by Montsef Solui. And he's coordinating between sort of the military and the producers. That production is actually ramping up at an enormous speed. So while I'm, I think you may be right, I think there's a goodly chance that it actually could come earlier. But if they, they're talking about a billion two doses, that's an enormous volume. For next year, I would guess if they've only got fifty million, which is what they're talking about by the end of the year, that'll go to all the first responders. But almost straight after that, you know that they're, they're, they're building up. So I'm not, I don't want to be over optimistic. I personally will be wearing my mask. I shall be grumping about being socially distanced, but I'll be doing it because I now conceive that there will be an end to that. There is gonna be an end to it.
And, um, just a quick question, how long, you know, do they think, uh, once you get the vaccine for it to be, you know, like really effective in your body and you can sort of maybe relax a little bit, even though it's only ninety percent? And we know that other ten percent, you can still, it's like the flu vaccine, you get the flu shot and you still can get the flu. So, um, how long do they think? Like two weeks, three weeks?
Oh, you'll know that, uh, so the, the response is actually pretty good within, uh, you know, you can, you can do with the, the antibody response. You can see within a couple, three days.
Okay.
First, the first response. And then after that, you get the cellular response, which is longer term. So, uh, you know, this, and then what we know now is those antibodies will stay for months. So the kind of interesting thing here is if you can get enough people vaccinated, you'll, you'll get the response within days. And then the more people that you have, the more people that you have, because it lasts for such a long time, the less people are likely to get infected. So it'll start to accelerate. The more people are invested, the more people who are infect, uh, neuter, are, uh, take the vaccine within a very short period of time, you'll start to see the number of infections just plummet because you just won't be meeting people with it. And you may-
Yeah.
So I'm, I think within days you'll see this, but remember with this one, there's two shots of one.
Okay. Excited.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Dr. Levin? Thank you, Dr. Levin. Again, we really appreciate these updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Keeps on going this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, uh, item number five, uh, we have an update from Justin Colmer, New Milford's community care coordinator.
So Justin, could, uh, Mike, can you unmute Justin and unmute Chief Sarudo, please?
Uh, excuse me, Pete, um, uh, you want me to, it's Justin Colmer, I'm assuming?
Yep, Jay Colmer and Spencer Sarudo, Chief Sarudo.
And Sarudo, all right, gotcha.
Hey, chief, I'll let you take it away first.
Good evening, everyone. It's, uh, Chief Sarudo and very happy to be here tonight with some, uh, very positive results, uh, from Justin Colmer. First of all, I want to thank everyone of you for your support. Thank you for, uh, having faith in, in us and Justin at the onset, providing us the resources for this position. It's been very effective within the community in so many different ways. Justin has had an impact on, uh, well over a hundred citizens within our community. Not only that, but he's, uh, impacted the way, uh, we in our police department approach, uh, policing and in a community policing manner and a services, uh, focused manner. Justin, I just want to say thank you very much to you for all the hard work you do. I have been privy to these stats as we go along and I think you'll all be very impressed with the, uh, success that we've had with this program.
It looks like Justin just got muted.
Thank you. Also, um, Michael, by any chance, could you, um, allow me to share my screen?
Uh, sure, I'll have to give you one second. I promote, I have to make you a co-host. Uh, so the invite to be co-host has been sent and then you should be able to see our screen once you've accepted the invite.
Will that be in my email, sir?
Uh, no, it should just pop up on your screen.
I have, uh, yet to see it yet, sir.
All right, so you are, you are-
I got it now, yes, sir.
All right.
Yep, we can see it, Justin.
Yes, sir. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Town Council, Mayor, Chief, Public. I'm gonna just take a brief couple of minutes here and kind of speak about what we're doing at New Milford Police Department and why it's different than any other police department across the country. So as, as most of you know, I started this position with the police department a little over a year ago. And really because of the onset of the opioid crisis. And what I kind of found was is we, we tailor this and realized that we could do much more than just focus on opioids. We can focus on our community. And we developed this community policing initiative. So throughout this presentation, I'm really just gonna talk about, um, the project outcomes. Cause for those that you don't know, um, I started right at the end of September last year. So all this data that you're gonna see is gonna be captured from October one, twenty nineteen through September thirtieth of twenty twenty. So starting as the chief had mentioned, there are four different ways that I can accept referrals from the community. As you can see on the left, um, there've been a hundred twelve total clients, eighty-five active and twenty-seven, um, are denied clients. And denied means that one, if they're not a resident of the town of New Milford, technically they're not in our jurisdiction as a new Milford Police Department. So that does not mean that I say, hey, see you later, go somewhere else. It says, hey, these are some local resources in your community. I apologize that I can't do more, but unfortunately, if you're living in Reading or Ridgefield, these are the places you're gonna have to go, as well as if, let's say, an individual's already connected to every single agency that there is. Merely I will be communicating with those agencies that they're already established with and then, you know, furthering their, their care. So most importantly with this graph on the right, it really shows that I can take clients from four different ways. At New Milford Police Department, anybody who's suffering from addiction, struggling with homelessness, needs mental health resources, or really just is looking for help in general, they can walk into New Milford Police Department and ask for help. And as you can see, that I do get a, a significant amount of individuals who either call or show up to the police department and ask for help because they don't know where else to turn, as well as any family or friend can call, um, and say, hey, look, I have my son, my daughter, my brother, my sister. And I don't know, I don't know where to go. But as, as you can see, that most of the time, these calls are coming into the PD as a nine-one-one call and I'm responding on scene with the officers and I'm connecting people to resources. And then lastly, any community provider such as New Milford Social Services, local therapy agencies, New Milford Senior Center, they can call as well. And they can say, hey, look, um, we have this individual, they, you know, they could benefit from you spending some time with them. they can call as well and they can say, hey, look, um, we have this individual, they, you know, they could benefit from you spending some time with them. So over the course of the last year, what we've seen is we've actually seen a call volume reduction. And what this means is of all the clients that I've taken on, before I took them on in the program, this is the total number of calls. And then after becoming a client of mine, we've seen that number drop significantly. So we've actually seen a 25% reduction in call volume to the police department by me working with individuals that are suffering from mental health, addiction, homelessness, domestic violence, and, um, really any, anything that you kind of see as a crisis. With that, not only are we seeing that reduction, but we're also seeing significant data to support that people are actually getting the services that they need. So for example, um, over the course of the last year, I've been able to house 10 chronic homeless individuals. So those are people that are either sleeping on the street, in a car or in a shelter, really in a place not meant for human habitation. But overall, I've been able to connect and house 29 out of 30 people, 34 people who have come to ask for help. With that being said, really focusing on a holistic approach and really coming up with the ideas that chief always says, we want to provide a hand up, not a handout. So we connect them with agencies for financial resources, connect them to food programs, but also we try to get them back in the workforce and get them working again. So I work very closely with employment agencies in the region. I've connected a significant amount of them, as you can see in the, in the presentation here. And out of 63% of people who are eligible for employment resources, I connected 63 to the appointment with the agency. And of that, 60% actually obtained employment and are actually back and now are working. Also, you know, that, that kind of transfers even to medical care and even mental health resources too. So when I say referred, that means that on the scene, I'm working with the individual, I made them an appointment at an agency. So we actually called together and said, hey, next Monday, we're going to go to this primary care office at 10 o'clock in the morning. And as you can see, 72% of the people took that, that offer and we made the appointment. And of that, 65% of people actually made it to the appointment, meaning I either show up with them, do a warm handoff, we communicate together so they feel support. And then I kind of transitioned to the professional because we're bridging that gap to those resources. And that's even to be said for a lot of people that are suffering from mental illness as well. I'm actually meeting them at the counseling agencies, making sure that they get connected. With that too, and substance use treatment, um, of the people who are eligible for detox that needed inpatient treatment, 71% of them completed detox and of that 71% actually transitioned to rehab or residential rehab. And 80% of them actually completed that rehab and followed up with aftercare services. So we're really trying to focus on not just calling a number and saying good luck, but we're actually saying, hey, look, we want to follow you through this continuum of care and we want to get you the resources that you need. So it's been pretty impactful to work with different community agencies and get them where they need to go. And then also on the prevention side, we have, um, other, other things that I've been doing too. So obviously in the, in the light of the opioid crisis, um, as, as everyone knows, we are losing lives and it's, it's very unfortunate. So one thing I've been working with the mayor that he wanted as well as the chief, we've been giving naloxone trainings out to the community. So over the course of the last year, I've given seven trainings and I've trained 96 people on how to use naloxone as well as what the dangers are of opioids and where to go for help. So part of the mayor's initiative, we've actually trained 34 town employees. We have Narcan kits available in town departments. There's one in the town hall. We have one kits for each department at John Pettibone Community Center. And really these, these employees understand what the dangers are, like I said, as well as what to do when they identify potential overdose. And your graph to the right really shows, um, data from when I, when I started this program, we pulled data from the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner from the state of Connecticut and we showed all the fatalities that were happening in the town of New Milford. So the yellow bars represent the percentages and the breakdown of age for overdose fatalities in the town of New Milford from the years 2012 to 2018 before we started our program. Since then, those bars in the gray are the age breakdown of people that we are educating on naloxone and dangers of overdose. Because what we're seeing is we're seeing a lot of young adults dying and a lot of parents don't know how to recognize the potentials of an overdose. So what we're doing is we're really trying to educate everybody where we can. So then everybody becomes more aware of the dangers of medications. Alongside that, not only are we educating the public, but I actually have been reaching out to every prescriber. That means any, any physician, any dentist, any veterinarian that can prescribe medication within the town of New Milford, I am actually meeting with them and their staff, educating them on the dangers of opioids and prescriptions, giving them resource sheets to say, hey, look, if you do identify someone that's suffering, here's where they can go for help, as well as I give them their contact information and I tell them that once again, if someone is suffering, they can come into New Milford Police Department, ask for help. We will not charge them with the crime and we will connect them to the resources that they need. So overall, as you can see on the graph on the right, um, we're hitting roughly about 50% total for the prescribers in the town of New Milford. I apologize that the numbers aren't better, but unfortunately with COVID, there have been a lot of restrictions of allowing people to get in in the office. So within this, all these numbers are kind of pre-COVID. I was able to get in and really talk to physicians within a couple of weeks and we were really making progress. And then obviously with the shutdown, unfortunately, we've, we haven't been able to move forward. And then lastly, I would not be successful if it wasn't for the great support that I have from community providers because I could do the best that I can on the scene and I can talk to the individuals in the moment of crisis. But if I do not have safe places for those individuals to go, they're never going to be able to move forward. So I've built relationships with 46 community providers within the greater New Milford area, specifically 20 in New Milford that I can connect people to. And as that graph points out on the right, that's a breakdown of the different types of services that we can connect them with, whether that's housing, financial resources, medical care, even state and local governments such as DCF or Adult Protective Services, I work with very frequently and those agencies together, we kind of come up with a plan. We create a team for the individual in need and we get them to move forward with their life. Lastly, one other, one other project that I have too is I, uh, have been working on capacity building for New Milford too because we could be doing the best that we can reactively to show up to every scene and work with every individual. But if we are not working systematically to improve the overall quality of life for the town of New Milford, we're going to be fighting, losing battle. So I have, I've elected and I've, I sit on the New Milford Shelter Coalition Board. Um, because of the great advancements, we've been dealing with the homeless, we've actually closed the shelter this winter due to COVID, but we don't really have any homeless at this time. So I've been working on revisioning their organization because just because we don't have anybody sleeping on the street, doesn't mean people aren't in need. And we're looking in ways, how can we continue to support those that are vulnerable? And we're going to be working on a vision and hopefully soon you'll be able to see on the new website, um, the direction that we're going. As well as for Loews and Fishes, I don't know how many people are familiar with Loews and Fishes Hostility House, but I recently had taken over as the chairman of the board of directors. And we are working obviously on building that new building and it's, it's taking a little bit longer due to COVID. But once this building is up and running, we're actually going to be implementing a gift back program where individuals who come for, for food and support will give back to the organization, whether that's sweeping, picking up cigarette butts, cleaning, getting connected to the community. And then Lisa Martin, the executive director and I will be working with those individuals to get them employment. And that's kind of how it ties into the employer advisory council. I've been working closely with TBI Co, the employment agency down in Danbury. Karen Pollard, obviously, as you all know, here in New Milford, as well as the culinary school, really trying to build a pool of employers where we can give people mock interviews, education around resume building, cover letter experience, and then help these individuals transfer right into full-time positions so they can move forward with their lives. And then lastly, New Milford Cert, I don't know how many people are familiar with New Milford Cert, but they do a lot of community emergency response. A lot of civilians are able to volunteer and become a part of this organization. So we've been working on setting the tone, reworking their organization, giving them the opportunities where they can be a part of scenes, like you see them doing traffic control, but they also can help in search and rescue incidents. They can help scribe for first responders and allow first responders to do more of what they need to do by taking some of the load off of them. So by building this capacity, we're able really to move forward together as a community. Really, which leaves me in the conclusion, really just to show you once again, the, the brief statistics of what this program has done over the course of the last year. Like I said, you know, we've seen a 25% reduction in call volume, but we've also been working on the prevention aspect of getting people the education that they need, working with community providers, not trying to replace a system, but merely just trying to open doors for people because they don't know where to go. Because we can provide an additional service here at the PD that nobody else is doing across the country. And we've, we've had great success doing it. So I kind of leave the floor up to all of you. If you guys have any questions, if you want to me to go back at all, kind of take it from there.
Great. Um, Justin, thank you, uh, very much for, for being here tonight and presenting this and, uh, congratulations on the, just the excellent work and the excellent, and more importantly, the excellent results. Um, to you and Chief Saruto and the whole, uh, team there. So, um, it's tremendous. A few questions, uh, though, um, so, and I wasn't aware that, that you were, you would get involved in domestic violence, uh, issues as well. So that's tremendous. Um, we, we know that's a huge issue in, in any community. So, uh, I'm glad I learned that. Um, are you seeing in, in the, um, in this COVID environment that we're in now, are there, are you seeing changes in the community uh, that are resulting in, in more intervention or how, how is that affecting you?
I would say that surprisingly, you know, you hear a lot of rumors and a lot of data around increased calls of substance use. And I think that specifically for the town of New Milford, I'm, I'm not seeing that as much as I am saying that because people are isolated, they're starting to feel anxious, right? They're starting to feel depressed. I mean, we, we all feel that when we feel isolated, we can't get that human touch. And I think that a lot of the calls and a lot of support I've been giving lately has been really like, hey, guess what? You don't have to be alone, you know, we can, we can adapt in this together. We can move forward together. And I can get them connected to resources and we can do telehealth visits with, with counselors and make sure that they know that they can talk to somebody. So that's what I'd say I'd see most.
Okay. And, and, you know, one other thing is, like, this is new for us and it sounds like it's new for, for, you know, not many of any other communities are doing this. Just for my curiosity, what is an average day in the life of Justin Colmer look like?
I'd say it probably varies just as much as you would think that a police officer would, right? So really at a given time, if there's a specific call that comes in, they say, hey, we need, we need you on scene. We need you to talk to the individual. Can you follow up the individual on there in that moment of need, providing that support? And then I am working with that individual and/or family and connecting them to the resources by setting dates in the future. So much so that I, I love Google Calendar. Thank God we have the Google Suite because I put in their appointment times and say, hey, guess what? Okay, Thursday morning, remember we have this appointment with the therapist. If you want, I can provide transportation and get you there. I can, excuse me, meet you there and we can follow up afterwards. So it's really trying to serve the immediate need as well as move forward with the future. And then in the free time in between, really working with those community providers, helping out, you know, the different food banks, um, working for those, those other nonprofits that I sit on the board of to really help steer the conversation for what New Milford needs. Because that's, that's what we're working with, right? We're working with the population here. And I, to your point, I would say that, oh, go ahead, sir.
Would you be able to give them a real life example? Um, no names, of course, but maybe a real life example explaining, uh, how you've helped someone?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd say that, um, as you guys all know, the town hall right next door is the, who's the Town Valley Insurance? Um, one day I got a call out of the blue saying, hey, there's, there's someone who's homeless and he's, he's sleeping with a blanket right outside the town hall. Can you go and help? I was like, absolutely. Like, I don't like anybody being out there when it has to be cold. So drive right down there, kind of, you know, do a quick assessment, find out what's really going on, why you're here. You know, what can we do together? And he said that, you know, he had recently had relapsed. He was, you know, had a long, had a long battle with addiction and really was trying to find somewhere to go to get the help, but he didn't know where to turn. And I said, perfect. So we, we actually write that in there. We called a couple detox facilities across the state. I found an open bed in Danbury. I said, jump in the car and let's go. And I have, we obviously have it on Mark Cruiser here. I was able to drive him right down to detox, got him down to detox, spoke with the counselors there, was able to transition to him to rehab. And then he's going to be entering sober housing again, so he can move forward with employment. And we're able to do that immediately where before we didn't know really where to turn. So having this resource, having this position really demonstrates that we can make an immediate effect as well as long-term outcomes for the individual.
That's tremendous. Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you for your work. That's, uh, and it made me, uh, warm my heart when I heard you say this effectively, we don't have any homeless people, uh, sleep, sleeping around here this winter.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I, I appreciate it, sir. And I think that, you know, the, the term homelessness is, is a challenge to define because people define it differently. And really being able to understand the housing system as well as I do now, working in this field, I can identify, what does that mean by homeless? Whether you're at imminent risk and you're housing and you're, you have to be out by the end of the month, whether you're literally sleeping in your car, whether you need help with security deposit and first month's rent. So really, when I say that we don't have, we have zero homeless, it's, it's hard to put a handle on knowing that we definitely have zero. If I don't get a call, I don't know, but we're not seeing any population size on the green or intent city. In the way that the state of Connecticut defines homelessness is if you have a place to lie your head in an apartment, whether that's your apartment or not, you're not homeless. So it's, that's unfortunate for people that can't afford rent. So I do work with those people too. And I say, okay, what's, what's your income? How can we get you more income? And let's find a place that you can afford wherever that is. So Mary Jane, I know you had a question. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Um, is there still such a shortage of rehab beds in Connecticut?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say, I'd say with COVID, it's, it's a challenge. I think that's, that's something I know I can't fix. I'm hoping, you know, you guys at the powers that be might be able to help motivate because I've been able to find detox beds for people. But let's say, let's say you're using a substance like cocaine where you can't detox from that, but you need to go to rehab. And Mary Jane, like you said, right now in COVID, it's even harder because most rehabs won't take you unless you have a negative COVID test and you quarantine for 14 days and who can verify that?
Yeah.
And, or they won't take them unless they come straight from detox. Well, if you don't need detox because the substance doesn't allow you to detox from it, how do you get to your rehab? And it's, it's definitely difficult for the Medicaid, Medicare population. And even for those who are not, they even have to pay more. So we definitely could use more detox facilities. We can definitely use more rehab facilities and we could definitely benefit from agencies working collaboratively rather than trying to say, hey, like, this is what we're doing and we're going to work in asylum. So.
Yeah, tough job. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mike, I, I know you had a question too, sir. I apologize.
No, more of a comment. I, I'm, I'm, I work with the community culinary board and Dawn has just said some of the stuff that you're doing is, it's just a game changer in New Milford and I just want to thank you. It's, it's, you know, when, when this person, this position was first, uh, given to us, you know, I supported, but I wasn't sure why we needed or what we're doing with it. But, you know, the vision was there from the police chief and mayor and I trust both of them. But it really is important decision and it just looks like it's actually saving us money in the long run, which is how you want all positions to be. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that, you know, we can save money and we can provide better care at the same time. And to really speak to, I know people may have more questions and the chief and I have spent a great amount of time trying to identify other programs to model this off of. And as the mayor and the chief both know, what we found was is nobody is doing this. Now there are programs focused around assistance for substance use or assistance for mental health, or they'll collaborate with agencies that work on domestic violence. But nobody from a community policing aspect is the driving force for that change. And I think here in New Milford, we have a great opportunity to continue this because the data is there to support that the work has been effective so far. And I think that we can create this model to promote for other parts of the state and the country.
It's awesome.
Any other questions for Justin or the chief? Well, Justin, I want to thank you again, chief. I mean, outstanding work. Uh, and just, uh, it's great to see that a pro, you know, a program that we developed, uh, is really bearing a lot of fruit and just exciting as we continue with the program. So thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Great work.
Okay, uh, mayor's remarks.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, first I'd like to congratulate the Greenway Varsity Hockey Team, the girls hockey team, uh, for their three and O win, uh, tonight over Watertown and they advanced to the SWC North Division semifinals. So outstanding job to the ladies. Uh, go Greenway for them. Also, congratulations to the Milford, the Milford High School Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams as this year they became SWC champions. Uh, outstanding job. Also like to congratulate, uh, Brooke, uh, Tiago on becoming the first female Eagle Scout of Also like to congratulate Brooke Tiago on becoming the first female Eagle Scout, the first class in the nation.
Oh, that's awesome.
Outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations to Brooke.
She's an outstanding girl.
Also, Katie, you had also said, you thank you to, to, to Women's Club United Way and all the volunteers for Operation Thanksgiving. It was great to see on Saturday our wonderful community as they always do, helping those in need. So thank you, everyone. Also, thank you to Chief Sarudo and the men and women of the New Milford Police Department. As we had our initial police cadets meeting on Saturday. It was great to see all those young men and women who want to be part of the cadets. Eagle One landed at the silo so that the kids could take a look at it. It was great to see parents and children all wanting to be involved. So outstanding work and we'll be reporting more as the cadet program continues on. Like to thank Jen Arnew, the volunteers, the drop-off locations and the scouts for the Warm Winter Project. And this project is focused on helping those in need stay warm this winter with hats, scarves, gloves and mittens for adults and children. You may see these items tied to trees for those in need around the green. So what it is, is the scouts yesterday and today place the items. They'll also be refilling them when needed. Like to also thank the Kiwanis Club, sponsors, donors, volunteers for this year's Flags of Valor that are right at the New Milford Historical Society. It's, I love seeing it every year. I know most, all of you probably do as well. And it's just a wonderful sight. So thank you again to everybody. I'd also like to thank our voter registrars, our cell Grenier and John Gazer, our poll workers, our staff, our volunteers, our town clerk, Noreen Pritchard and her staff, Chief Sarudo and the Milford Police Department, the town and Board of Ed Facilities teams for all their help when we went to vote on Tuesday, as well as absentee and ER ballots. All their hard work went for a seamless voting experience here in New Milford, and I can't thank them enough for all of their hard work. As far as a COVID nineteen update for today, I'd like to, and speaking with Mike Cressman, like to give you the totals and these are total confirmed numbers as of today. This doesn't mean how many people have it currently. This is the numbers that the state of Connecticut tracks. State of Connecticut currently has seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-six. Litchfield County, two thousand five hundred and fourteen. That's up one hundred and thirty-six from Friday. Hospitalizations are seven, up four from Friday. New Milford is at four seventy-five, up thirty-three since Friday. As I said before, please note that these are total confirmed cases since we beginning, since the beginning of the numbers. But we can definitely see a trend up as many of our surrounding communities already have noticed. We're asking our residents to continue to wear masks, continue to have their six-foot social distancing, continued hand hygiene, meaning if you are near a spigot, as hot as waters you can tolerate for twenty seconds or more, washing underneath your nails all the way up to your wrists. If you're not near a spigot, please use hand sanitizer. Also, we're asking you to keep your six-foot social distancing. And if you can, make it a, a plan to contact ten friends or family that you know during the week, especially the elderly, as they, as we know, they're the most most immune, the most, I'm sorry, I'm senior moment. Thank you. They're the most vulnerable part of our population as well as those that are, are compromised with underlying conditions. Starting tomorrow, Alicia DeCorpo, our interim superintendent, has notified that due to the course of, of, of community within the SCADA COE community, three people were tested positive. They're going to be going fully remote starting tomorrow until Monday. And the reason for that is they can't get enough staff that come in to help with SCADA COE. So she's going to go ahead and just do full remote loading, remote learning from eleven-ten to eleven-thirteen. The individuals that were tested COVID were last in on ten-thirty and or eleven-two, and they've not received any reports of any other students or staff members. They're experiencing illnesses with COVID symptoms. Superintendent DeCorpo also asked that if you have children within the system, if any of them are experiencing any kind of symptoms, whether that be a sore throat, a fever, not feeling well, to please keep your children at home. And that's all in efforts of protecting both the staff and also other children. Concerning COVID nineteen as well, for Veterans Day, and speaking with our American Legion commanders, Jeff McBriery and VFW Commander Jim Delancey, we have decided to cancel our normal Veterans Day ceremony due to the uptick in the COVID numbers. Also, Governor Lamont's new gathering restrictions that we'll talk about in a moment. We're going to have a smaller event to honor our veterans. We'll be posting that on Facebook Live. So we're asking residents not to come down, but to watch it, Facebook Live. But we are going to honor, as we always have, our veterans who some have given their lives for our wonderful country. As far as the governor's rollback to two-point-one, that started effective on Friday. Some of the items that the rollbacks are is for restaurants. In-person dining is to close at nine-thirty PM. That means service is over. And also the dining area must be closed. Takeout and delivery may continue. Twenty-four, twenty-four hour diners may reopen for indoor dining for breakfast at five AM. Entertainment and recreation venues, they must continue at a, a six-foot spacing between parties and they are capped at one hundred people. For private, social and recreational gatherings, indoor, the cap is at twenty-five people. Outdoor, the cap is at fifty people. For private, social and recreational gatherings, indoor, the cap is at ten people. Outdoor, the cap is at ten people. Religious gatherings indoor up to fifty percent capacity capped at a hundred with masks and social distancing required. Outdoor, it's fifty percent capacity, six-foot spacing, no capacity limit, masks and social distancing is required. Moving on to our roads, our road program, we're winding down the third season of roadwork. And just as an edification completed, roads are McNulty, Old Parkwood, Polaris, Warwick, Daly, Short, Forest, Gretel, Mist Hill, Wellsville, Eagle, Carmen Hill, one and two, Grandview, Wampum, Indian, Arrowhead, Law Mountain, Elm Street Extension, Geiger, Orchard Heights. We also did the police department sidewalks and parking. We're continuing on with Brentwood and Cobbler. Hecock, Hecock, Crossbrook. We finished the final coat, I believe it was on Friday, and now we're just doing some we're doing some aprons and also doing some hydro seating. Gargan Road, we're, Garden Road, we're continuing with the punch list. And beginning in April, we're going to be doing Burnham, Dorset, Popular, Brentwood, Cobbler, Charterhouse and West Street. So I want to thank our DPW team for their outstanding job, our contractors. As a, we've done approximately with all courses of maintenance and repair. We've done, we've done twenty-eight miles of roads this year. So outstanding work. As far as the library, we continue on with the construction. And I'd like to thank Steve and Vasquez, our clerk of the works. Currently work in progress is they are continuing with the foundation and slab work for footings and piers so that the second floor can be installed. They've also installed the boiler, which is going to be good for our library employees. So it can still be nice and warm as they're working. Also, they're continuing to work on the elevator pit. And as we talked about before, this is an eighteen-month project. And we'll continue to fill in the town council as we move forward with the project. Also, our park and rec team. The maintainers have completed their first round of leaf removal at Len Demming, Pettybone, Town Hall, the Library, Richmond Center, Ray Ramsey Park, the Police Department and Town Green. They're going to continue to do leaf removal. So thank you to our maintainers. Also, our events director Laura Murphy is working on getting securing the beer, the bid for the spring and summer brochure that will be going out in due time, the winter one and spring one. Aquarium Water has worked on turning off the water for our town green and draining it. So we won't have any problems there. The maintainers have already also winterized the buildings at Len Demming Park for the winter. Also, Laura Murphy will be, and this is all predicated to the town and what color we will be in as of Thursday. Currently, we're in orange. But she's working on a floral design workshop. She's looking to offer chair can, chair caning, Tai Chi, Wing Dong, snow shoeing and cross-country ski programs for the winter. But this is all going to be on dependent on COVID nineteen and our color and where we are within the programs. Also, speaking with Dan Calhoun, he's seeking donations to cover the cost of replacing a hundred and twenty sets of garland, bows and lights for lamp posts in the downtown area. So if you know anybody that's interested in making a donation, be greatly appreciated. Already like to thank Bakewell and Mulher, Nordica Toys and Genron Nursing who have graciously donated so far to allowing us to get updated garlands and, and bows for the holiday season. Also, Dan Calhoun's met with the New Milford Cricket Team. We do have a cricket team here in New Milford about the installation of a permanent pitch at Clatter Valley. And we'll be talking about that as we move forward during the winter and spring sessions. I'd also like to tell the council that as of today, I received from the state of Connecticut, our grant was approved, our steep grant was approved for a hundred and five thousand two hundred. And that steep grant is going to help the senior center design and engineer the new kitchen facility that will be down in the bottom. And this is all in efforts of when loaves and fishes moves to their new facility, the culinary school will be moving into the bottom, as we've talked about before. And this steep grant will be providing us the ability with engineering and with design for us to put in the proper stuff for that. And then we'll continue to create that great symbiotic relationship with the culinary school, helping and serving delicious meals to our seniors. So thank you to Tammy Rudin, who has helped in getting this steep grant to us. Also, concerning our social services, energy packets have been sent for applicants for early oil delivery, which is going to, I know we've had great weather in the seventies, but it will turn, we all know, to much colder weather. We do have additional seniors that are looking for oil delivery. So I'd like to thank Jasmine and her team as they begin that process. Also, with the senior center as well, like to thank them for them running again their food bank for our seniors. That continues to increase as well. I believe they saw forty, forty-two people with that. Also, they go on our bus runs to help. I believe we had over four hundred bus rides this past week, our seniors, and they take our seniors anywhere from medical appointments to store shopping, whatever's need for seniors. And they're doing that a very COVID nineteen compliant way. And we continue to assess that by allowing our parks at Clatter Valley and at Carlson's Grove for limited access on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So our seniors can use those to stretch their legs to be in a safe environment as they cohort with one another. Would that be, lastly, I'd like to talk about our building team led by Mr. Murphy. So this past week, they did ninety-seven inspections and they issued a hundred and two permits. So we're still seeing significant economic vitality with permits and with inspections. So that's good news, especially as we move into the winter months. I'd ask Mr. Murphy if he's seen any decline, which he hasn't seen as of yet. So that's all good news. So that's all I have, Katie.
Okay.
Do I ask Pete a question?
Sure.
Other question. I'm just going back to the COVID numbers. So we have thirty-three more cases or positives since this Fri- last Friday?
Yes.
And like, what, at what point do we become, like, how many cases do we need that we're going to turn like red, like Brookfield and Danbury?
So it's a great question, Mary Jane. Speaking with Mike, we're anticipating that on Thursday, we will be a red, we will be, we will go to red as Brookfield did and as Baffal did.
And they're not thinking that these numbers are coming out of the nursing home or it's, it's the general community spread, probably.
Where Mike, where Mike has said it's generally coming from is when someone has tested COVID as positive, they go home to quarantine and then they are positive and then the spread goes within to the family itself. And that could be a multiplier of anywhere from two to five to six. We're also seeing some of the spread come from when people go to work. So they could be working in some of the hotspot areas. And then obviously they come back and they are COVID, they're tested COVID positive, and then that multiplier is in within the family too. So that's what we're kind of seeing where those outliers are. And then obviously, if the spouses then are working, whether it be in town or out of town too, that's an additional multiplier.
Right. Okay. I guess we just got to hang on.
Absolutely.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to thank Mike Cressman and his team for all the hours they've been putting in. They've been doing a tremendous job, especially with the contact tracing, making sure that, you know, we do as best as we can as a town. I know he's been working hand in hand with Alicia over at the BOE to make sure if there is a case, we can contact trace it or make sure people are pre-quarantined, so to speak. So he's just been doing a great job. I can't thank Mike enough.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Last item, number seven, move to accept the request from Bill Buckby for the Run Santa Run Road Race to be held on November twenty-eighth for two hours from ten AM to noon.
Second. And just, just for the minutes as well, I did speak with Mr. Buckley and I did tell him that the town is in red during the time before, right before he has his event, obviously. Red towns cannot have these type of events and he is aware of that. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, actually, could that be worked into the motion? So it's perfectly clear.
Oh, yeah, I was going to add it. I just figured Pete would probably say it first. I didn't want to make that choice. Yes. So I'll just amend to say that move to accept the road closure for Run Santa Run on November twenty-eighth for the hours of ten AM to noon, providing that the Health Department approves such an activity.
Second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, mayor.
Everyone, have a good day.
Thank you.